To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. This meeting is being televised by Chumpstead Telemedia. If there's anyone present who is planning to record, would you indicate it this time? All right, I'll take care of that. Nobody's doing that. First item of business, we need to approve the minutes of the regular school committee meeting of October 3rd, 2017. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular school committee meeting, October 3rd, 2017.
Motion made in second. Any discussion, any corrections or whatever anybody picked up? Hearing done. All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Abstain.
Okay, three in one abstention. I should note that there's a family situation and John Moses will not be able to be with us tonight because of that. All right, this is the time for public comments. I invite people who would like to address the committee to come forward and please give us your name and address for the secretary so she can record that.
Hello, my name is Marie O'Donnell. My address is 25 Maple Road, Byham School. Good evening, school committee, Dr. Lang, Dr. Hirsch, parents, students, people watching. My name is Marie O'Donnell. I'm the executive vice president of the Chumpstead Federation of Teachers and I proudly teach kindergarten at Byham School. You've seen me here quite a bit. Unions are often stereotyped as troublemakers and putting their self-interests first, you know, ahead of everything else. And I don't really subscribe to that characterization. I believe that we as teachers and as a union of teachers are advocates to promote the highest standards within our profession. We campaign for equality and fairness and we work to be strong voices in our community for our communities and students. So with that being said, I am here tonight with a heart filled with gratitude. I know you know this, but for people that are watching, I think it's important to know what a breath of fresh air Full Day K is.
Keep talking, keep talking.
Oh, it's the best part of my speech too.
Back up, rewind.
All right, rewinding. So I need people to understand what a breath of fresh air Full Day K is for this town. The class of 2030 has been given an opportunity to explore and discover the magic of literacy and mathematics and science where once there were lessons that were a one-shot deal in Halftime K, these children have the advantage of time to learn through teacher modeling concepts, then by guided practice, and finally through independent exploration. In the classroom day to day, we're accomplishing three times what the kind of work that we did in the past, and yet these children are experiencing school with a balance of work and play, as every five-year-old should do. The time they spend interacting with each other through purposeful play is such a gift. They are afforded time to work out differences much in the same way as they do academics, with modeling, guidance, independence. The absence of stress for the children and for the teachers is very much appreciated. It's been a very long time since I've felt this excited in my classroom. So I just wanted to come here tonight to say thank you to Dr. Lang. That's okay.
He can hear.
To Dr. Hirsch.
He's in the closet.
To the members of this -- Jay, come out of the closet so I can thank you. I want to say thank you to the members of this committee, to Paul Cohen, the town meeting reps, the elementary principals, and to the team of amazing kindergarten teachers throughout the town. For everyone watching who supported the implementation of Full Day K, I just want to let you know that we're not wasting a second and we're not taking it for granted. The class of 2030 is sure to do wonderful things for this town and I'm just grateful to be part of their world. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. For those of you who don't know, Marie and I were both on the committee that started this whole process. So it's particularly satisfying for us because we, as we went around to the different towns that had it and saw how the little kids were thriving, couldn't wait to get here. So thank you for your time. Would anyone else like to address the committee? Okay, so we are now under student information for us. Ladies, if you would want to take over?
So we had a financial literacy fair today at the high school. So in the Learning Commons, they did a real-world profile on financial literacy. So on the 19th, we're going to have an early release day. The 20th is senior night for the football team and we're going to have a best buddies raffle there. The 25th is picture retakes. The 28th is the senior Halloween dance. On the 24th, we're going to have a flu clinic at the school. And about two weeks ago, the student Wi-Fi got shut down, which many students had complaints about, not just because they weren't being able to use their phones, but because they thought that their ability to do work requiring like web access was a lot harder without the Wi-Fi. So that became prominent in the past two weeks. And for seniors, we have our senior dues coming up, which are currently $90, but they'll be going up at the end of October, and that's going to cover most of our senior year costs. And then Chumpstead High School was recognized by the College Board recently for the amount of AP classes we offer and how well we do on these tests. Haunt for Cures is coming up, which is an event run by the National Honors Society, and that's at the Paul Center on October 29th, and that's for families in the community to come and spend the day and dress up and trick or treat and stuff. And then this, over the past few weeks, social studies classes have been going to the Ted Kennedy Center, which was covered by the Lowell Sun, and it went really well. And it was a senate simulation thing that they were doing, and they plan to do it for next year.
May I ask a question about the Wi-Fi? Do you have no internet access? Do you have wired internet access?
So like on the computers that like this, like the school, like that they provide, like we have Wi-Fi on there, but like for students like on their phones and stuff like that, the Wi-Fi just doesn't really work anymore.
Probably a wired connection on the computers.
On the computer, but on like the phones.
So the network is up, but your Wi-Fi is not.
Yes.
Got it. It's interesting. Two weeks.
Okay, we're now going to continue with other good news.
Yeah, we're just having some technical difficulties with the. The TV wants to go to sleep, but we need to get this up and going, both for a little video we have for you and then our presentations tonight. Both have PowerPoints as well. So Linda is trying to get that going for us, and as soon as we can get it up and going, we'll cut over. Do you want to trade off with me and I'll try to get back on? You come share some good news? Oh, that was your good news.
Wait, what was your good news?
That's the video we're trying to get playing.
Oh.
Well, I can say a couple of things while I'm waiting. You know, I was fortunate enough to go to the acapella show the other night that the boosters put on, and it was a fantastic event for a number of reasons. Our two groups. Thursdays and the, oh. Crescendos were both outstanding, and the kids from Northeastern with our own run Benekopal were very good. I think that the earth, wind, and fire number just was off the charts. What was interesting, a couple of things, the president of the Northeastern group noted that the kids were really lucky that they had acapella opportunity because they didn't in their, you know, in their particular schools. Another thing that I thought was really good is that one of the soloists pointed out there was a fifth-year pre-med student working with gene cell research or something, so it's not just music majors. And I think that's a good thing because a lot of times think that, you know, when they go into an occupation that they're giving up music or giving up art or whatever. And if you're really passionate about something like that, you don't have to. I also wanted to comment a little bit further about today's event. The Rotary Club worked with the school, the business department to put on this reality fair. And what happened, we've been doing this with Ryla, the sophomore Rotary Leadership Training Program. The kids are given a job with a salary. Most of the salaries range from $30,000 to $70,000. And there are various stations around the room. They have to create a budget for the month, and they go to talk with people about housing, insurance, food, all the basics, as well as some extras. And for the, you know, for almost all of them, unless they've had a course that's done something similar in the past, it was the first time they've done it. And it's really eye-opening because they, you know, with a little kind of emphasis, they sometimes go and want to have a concert, and they want to have a dog, and they want to have all this stuff, and they figure out, I can't do any of this stuff because I don't have enough money if I want to eat and have a place to live. So there's a real emphasis on consumer education at this point, and so it's great timing for us. And this is the first time that we've done it. I want to commend the business department for the work that they put in. They were there setting up last night until 10:30. In fact, they were afraid they'd set off the alarm, but I guess they didn't. So it took a lot of work, but I think the potential for this in the future as well, it was successful today, but I think the potential is great. And one of the things they were talking about is maybe on an early release day is running it for the faculty because they think the faculty would find it, you know, interesting. So a lot of, a lot of really good stuff going on in a lot of different ways in the district.
Yeah, I'll just add, it would have been a beautiful video, but no, we actually, we had town meeting, we had town meeting last evening, and it was the first night of town meeting. Under the introductory articles, the school department just thanked town meeting. As you recall, a year or so ago, town meeting had appropriated $7.9 million to be able to add modular classrooms at each of our elementary schools. It was a kind of a contentious. It was a contentious issue at the time, you know, really, it was a very close vote that passed, and a lot of people questioned, you know, timing and the amount of the funding and whatnot related to them. But we did have the funding appropriated. As this committee knows, we went out to bid early. We were one of the first districts out. The construction projects took place this past summer. We were able to open up each of our four modular classroom buildings in time for the first day of school, and as Marie indicated earlier, be able to implement Full Day K, which had really long been desired here in the community. We had a very short video that Pete Padula from Chumpstead Telemedia helped us put together. They did a very nice job with it. That just kind of gave people an opportunity to see inside the classrooms themselves. We did host an open house about two weeks ago, opened up each of the modular classrooms and allowed parents to. Allowed parents to come and.
I did, I'm not even touching it.
We allowed people to come and take a tour of the modular classrooms themselves, and it was very well received. I was at Harrington that evening. We had about 25, 30 people, and primarily community members. These are people that aren't associated with the Chumpstead Public Schools. They were able to come by and take a peek at the modular classrooms themselves, the technology in them, different curriculum materials and furnishing. So it really did go quite well. So later on this evening, if we're able to pull the video up, we will be able to share that with you. So.
Two phrases that went off very well were on time, because some people felt we couldn't do that and under budget by over a million dollars. So it's a major accomplishment in today's society on both of those things. We have one other piece of good news, and for that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Mr. Lepoli so he can share that with us and then we get some other comments on it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and there is some good news to talk about. With the 4-0 unanimous decision, the board has voted to expand and extend a new five-year contract with our existing superintendent, Dr. Lang. So I'm proud to tell you that Dr. Lang will be here over the next five years. Typically, you would see a superintendent sign a contract for three years. The board felt that his expertise, his guidance, what his accomplishments have been over just two years have been outstanding, and we wanted to see if we could get Dr. Lang to stay a couple more years, which is very unusual in a contract with a superintendent. So we're proud to tell you that through a decision of 4-0, we voted unanimously to support and create the contract with Dr. Lang over the next five years. But just to point out a couple of the things that Dr. Lang has put together, and I think it's important that the public know how quickly certain things took place in the Chumpstead Public School systems that prior to Dr. Lang didn't exist. Prior to Dr. Lang, there's never been a comprehensive facility assessment. And what is that? That told the entire town, the selectmen, finance committee, certainly the board, everybody in town, the condition of our buildings and what to expect as far as capital improvements over the next 10 years and sometimes beyond. He created a statement of interest with the Mass School Building Authority to put us in the queue to talk about creating either a new school or some expansion of our buildings in years to come. He created the custodial cleaning service model. This model has been so successful where he's been able to bid small companies out there that for the first time ever, we've had the cleanest schools we've had in a long time. Prior to this year, you will know that the cleaning contract that we had, there was a lot of customers, I call them customers, but our parents that were disappointed in the schools and what they looked like and teachers, they voiced their concern. The model has been so successful that other school systems across the state of Massachusetts has actually called Dr. Lang to kind of understand how he did it because they're trying to implement this model that he put together himself. I think what's also exciting is he's completed the contract across all divisions of our school system, from teachers all the way down to the cafeteria workers. Everybody has brand-new contracts. On his watch, in two short years, we now have $850,000 in our reserve fund for special ed. We have a million dollars in school choice. We have $300,000 in food service. In less than two years, since we've hired Dr. Lang, we now have a full-time police officer at Chumpstead High School. We have probably one of the best relationships that we've ever had with Chumpstead Police Department and the command staff. We also have access to the cameras, and there's probably well over 350 cameras. The police, for the first time, have access to all those cameras in the event of a crisis. That's never been the case before in the past. He reinstated the science coordinator. He's hired two new principals, center and Harrington. He sought and received $1.7 million in capital improvements. He's expanded relationships with Harvard Grad Program, UMass Lowell, with the staff and the students on cutting-edge policies and practices. So we felt it, we felt as a board, a 4-0 decision to vote to tie Dr. Lang's hands to Chumpstead for the next five years. So we're grateful, we're excited, and we just want to tell you how much we appreciate all that has happened in less than two years. So thank you, Dr. Lang, and thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. No, I'm very happy to be able to stay on board. I very much enjoyed the last couple of years here in the district. I think it's a good fit for me personally. I think it's a good fit for Chumpstead. I enjoy working here every day. I think in the last couple of years, we have accomplished a lot. I won't go into all the different points, but I enjoy getting up and coming to work every day, and I look forward to the continuity and continuing of that service for the years to come. So I'm very excited and pleased with the school committee's actions. I thank you. I thank the community, and I certainly look forward to working with you through 2023.
I just want to add one more thing. I was hoping that you started to talk about it, but I just got to mention it one more time. He mentioned a Full Day K. For years and years and years, through Marie's own words, Chumpstead has tried to have Full Day K, but not a burden on the taxpayers. Why should our parents pay for public education? Well, for the first time, we have Full Day K. It's not a burden on our parents to pay for Full Day K. And as Dr. Lang just said, we proposed a $7.9 million addition through modulas on our schools to support it, also to expand the capacity in every school. And we returned actually $1 million back to the town of Chumpstead. So as you said, while you were here in less than two years, implemented Full Day K, paid for it, and returned on time, under budget, $1 million back to the town of Chumpstead. I think that's the kind of fiscal responsibility prior to you, Dr. Lang, that our town was looking for. And I think as far as transparency, you're actively involved on a weekly basis with all the boards, in particular, town manager Paul Cohen, to let him know exactly what's happening in our school system. So transparency and Full Day K and safety and moving forward in less than two years, I think is really exciting. Thank you, Dr. Lang.
In wrapping this up, I want to thank Mr. Lepoli and Mr. Moses, who's not here tonight. I think when the details of the contract come out, everyone's going to feel that it's fair and well-structured, well-constructed, and the superintendent's happy. So hopefully all around, it'll work out well. Okay, next item.
We're going to have to continue to work on this, but if we move into the first item of the evening. If you recall last year when we were doing our department meetings, one of the departments that we weren't able to, because I think some snow and rescheduling, we weren't able to get to was English and Social Studies. So I'd love to invite Stephanie Quinn and Margaret and anyone else you have with you here this evening up to talk a little bit about the English and Social Studies offerings in the Chumpstead Public Schools. And I'm not missing your presentation. I'm just sliding out so that I can go try one other thing to try to get you going, but I will be listening to what you have to say.
We're going to open it up here.
Okay.
So that we can have a basis to go from. And then our wonderful CHS students that offered to join us tonight will be able to follow along as well because we have brought two students with us tonight. So I'm Stephanie Quinn and the English Language Arts and Social Studies Department Coordinator, and I have with me tonight.
I'm Margaret Blakely, and I am the program facilitator for English at the high school.
We also brought along two of our most wonderful senior students at CHS. So here we have Sam Hall. Let Sam introduce himself real quick.
My name's Sam Hall. I'm a senior at CHS.
My name, my name is Sam Orfanos. I'm also a senior at CHS.
So I want to thank them both for coming out tonight and giving up a little bit of their time, and thank you all for having us. I know last year we couldn't fit it in, so we're really grateful to have an opportunity to talk to you guys about all the work that's been going on, both at the middle schools and the high schools with regards to English and Social Studies. So we just want to talk a little bit about, because we know that there's a lot of focus in our state on STEM learning, which is absolutely wonderful, and we completely support it, but we want to give a wonderful shout-out to the humanities and how valuable and important they are in developing the whole child, that that's really an essential component, that we have an opportunity to introduce students to other languages, histories in different cultures. We want to give an opportunity for our students to really think critically, read critically, work with subjective and complex and imperfect information, and determine how to best make decisions on their own. Through the humanities, we teach empathy. We really encourage our students to think creatively and to reason as well. So there are so many different components. And humanities are essential to developing informed citizens, and we know that that's essential to the promise of our democracy. So we just wanted to give a shout-out. We're going to start out by talking about English Language Arts, and I'll have Margaret talk about some of the work that's been going on at the high school level.
So again, thank you for having us. I'm so excited to be here to talk about what we've been doing at the high school over the last year, really. So in the ninth and 10th grade and 11th grade areas, we've been working over the past year to vertically align our curriculum and our writing skills so that each year has a focus, and the teacher of 11th grade knows what the 10th grade teacher was working on, and everyone can kind of build off what was taught the previous year. And in order to do that, we designed lessons with a direct focus on one of the writing skills for the grade level, and we align those with the universal design for learning principles to make sure that they're engaging for all learners in the classroom. We did that through something which I'm really excited that we're bringing back, which is the Looking at Student Work protocols, so people can present in a structured way, get immediate feedback, take that feedback and use it for a lesson design. So we were really excited to bring those back, and the department did a really great job with it. We've also been working on updating the framework, updating our curriculum to align with the new frameworks, and we've done that also through looking at student work protocols. Right now, we're working on designing lessons to meet the new MCAS 2.0 test, which is going to be similar to MCAS, but a little bit different. But we still don't have a 10th grade sample, so we're doing our best to just work on skills that we think are critical in our curriculum either way and are helping them develop the kind of thinking that they need to be successful on the test, but successful in thinking in high school, beyond high school, and in society. Also. Also, we have been really focusing on reading comprehension, which will help them greatly with that test. Additionally, we're trying to bring more technology into the classroom. So, this year, all of the English teachers, and really, most teachers at the high school are being trained on Google Classroom, and they're also incorporating Chromebooks and iPads into a lot of their teaching to try to engage students through multiple means. This year, we're going to actually offer our first PD course using Google Classroom for the English department at the high school. I'm going to be designing a course on how to use special education strategies to meet the needs of all learners in the general education classroom, and that's going to be totally given on Google Classroom. So, I'm excited about that, and I'm sure they're super excited to take it, so.
I have no doubt they are. So, at the middle school level for ELA, we're doing a lot of similar work that Margaret's leading up at the high school, in that we're working to align our curriculum to the updated frameworks. The frameworks for ELA and mathematics were updated and recently released in July of 2017. So, the teachers had an opportunity to look at the draft versions and then the, what was the accepted versions of those in the spring. They did some crosswalk documentation so they could understand what areas were changed in the frameworks. There wasn't very many significant changes, but some, and so they spent some of their summer curriculum work making some of those adaptations. So, we, there is a little more emphasis on grammar again in some of our grade levels, so we had teachers doing some grammar development. We had other teachers doing summer curriculum writing development around specific writing strategies and implementing those into our middle school classrooms. And we also have a number of teachers who are working with some new technology, too. So, we were able to negotiate a pilot program for IXL for ELA, which we have had that for math for a couple of years now, which has been really fantastic, but we didn't have a real comparable or good comparable program for our ELA students. The IXL in the past was really focused on grammar, and it didn't have any questions about reading comprehension or working on writing skills, but now it does. So, we're excited to try this out, and we just had a training yesterday for the first time with our fifth and sixth-grade teachers, and they were very excited to get started with it. And then, next week, we'll be working with the seventh and eighth-grade teachers to get them, get them started. So, over the course of the next few months, the teachers in the middle school will be working with IXL, getting their students involved with it. The students are very adept with it already because of their math work, but practicing some English Language Arts skills. And then, we'll make an evaluation about whether or not we want to move forward with keeping IXL in the ELA department at the middle school. Many of our teachers are already also working on an iReady pilot to determine what type of universal screener we want to look at to support student learning. So, I have, all of our teachers have access to IXL. All of our teachers have an opportunity to look at the data from the initial assessment through iReady so that they can get to know their students a little bit more, just giving them another access point of information in order to support student learning. The middle school teachers, as we really get into our PD season, are going to be working on focusing on critical thinking, reading comprehension, and expanding their writing skills. They'll be taking a Google Classroom course designed around reading instruction and reading strategies to support students in the ELA classroom. And we have, you know, our overall focus is best practices. So, we know that we're getting ready, and they did have done a lot of work around writing and writing instruction and reading as well the last couple of years to prepare students for the transition to the new MCAS. And I think they did have done a very nice job, and we'll continue to work on that this year as we learn more about what the expectations are. But our goal at the end of the day is to just use best practices for literacy instruction at the middle school. We did take some time, or two years ago, and this is a document that we've been working on, which, when you get the PowerPoint, you'll be able to see it. The middle school teachers, both English and Social Studies, worked together to come up with a core writing belief and strategy statement. So, these are what we feel are the most important and essential components of teaching writing and the best strategies that we implement in our classrooms in order to get students to be successful writers, not only at the middle school, but then transitioning up into the high school level.
So, now, I'm going to talk about the new senior course at CHS. So, previously, we had several different electives that students could choose which they would like to focus on for their senior year. We piloted that for a while and went with it, and now we're changing it a little to make a combined course that's really the best units of each of those courses, to give students a more well-rounded, overall, English education in their senior year. So, twelfth-grade teachers spent most of last year looking at the specified course that they taught and deciding what they thought were their favorite units, the ones that reached students the best, the ones that would prepare them best for their future in English and their future in society. And they took those units and they presented them to each other, and they combined them into one curriculum that we're now piloting this year, and so far, we've gotten great feedback on it. So, as I said, it's the best part of each course, and it's heterogeneously grouped. So, senior year, they're either taking AP or they're taking this course. So, it's a really nice mix of students. It's a good mix of learners. It gives teachers the chance to differentiate and really present the work that they're proudest of. So, additional English electives, we're still offering the writing for high school, writing for college, journalism, public speaking, creative writing, and we've added an AP seminar for seniors. We've added a poetry class for juniors and seniors. We've added a heaven and hell elective for juniors and seniors, and we've added myths, folktales, and fairy tales elective for juniors and seniors. So, we're really hoping to give students who have a passion for English the chance to pursue it, because they've had the opportunity to double up in a variety of things and other subjects, and over the past years, we haven't had the resources to really offer that in English, and we're hoping to really build back up the English electives and give students more options.
I'm going to introduce Sam.
So, now, I'm super happy to introduce Sam Hall. He's an outstanding person. He started in English 9H2 and has worked his way up to this year, being in the AP Literature class. He was the eleventh-grade English Award recipient, a little plug for the Resiliency Program. He's a former Resiliency student of mine, so I'm extremely proud of him. Another thing that he does, just because he's a great all-around person, is he tutored refugee students with Ms. Sheehan and Ms. Sandholm at a local church last year to help them with their English and writing skills. So, he's going to speak a little bit about his experience in the English program.
Hi, I'm Sam Hall. I'm a senior at high school, as I've already said. When I first came here, I moved to Chumsford in seventh grade, so I moved from a very different town. We had like sixty kids in my class, and we expanded a lot. And I noticed there was actually quite a big difference in English here as there was in my old school, much superior. Like, I had issues with my grammar beforehand, and I quickly had to adapt in order to get good grades. And as high school, I got in freshman year, I was in with Ms. Sandholm. I had her as my teacher. And then, I had, I've had three other teachers since. I'm now an AP with Mr. Cordemarch, who's great, by the way, small plug. Over the year, a big part of the English department is the helping students like learning and like reading, and I think that they've done a really good job of that. All of the teachers I've had have been fantastic in their ability to just give me extra books to read. Like, I've always liked reading, but if they didn't, if I didn't know what to read, I would just stop reading, and they've never, that's never happened before. Ms. Blakely has given me like four, I think. Mr. Carbonito gave me a couple, and last year, Ms. Abelsot gave me my favorite book, which was Albert Kimmu's The Stranger, which is very philosophical and fun, but we won't get into that. So, that's the biggest plus for me, is I, it's really flourished, or helped my love for reading flourish, and, which is one of my favorite aspects of learning, is reading about new things and new ideas and new points of view. And that's one thing that they've also helped me see is respecting everybody's point of view is incredibly important in today's day and age, and as some, it's not seen all the time by professionals, but the English department at CHS has absolutely done that with, for me. We, in every one, every year, we've had Socratic seminars that open up the floor to students and allow them to speak their mind and speak their, and how they read something, and which could be completely different from somebody else. And it really helps you understand other people's viewpoints and helps with the empathy that you were referencing. And I thought that that's really great. I'll be using these skills that it's teaching me for years and years and years.
Do you want to share your plans for next year?
Oh, so, I'm, my top choice is UMass Amherst in Linguistics, which is probably in somewhere related to my English, English education.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to talk a little bit about Social Studies right now, and I had a quote in here for you, that the true purpose of education is to produce citizens. And this is from the Archbishop of New York. It's quoted by Eleanor Roosevelt in her 1930 speech, an article entitled Good Citizenship: The Purpose of Education. And if you haven't read Eleanor Roosevelt in a while, please go back. It's a fabulous piece and extremely relevant to today, even though it was written in 1930. So, that leads into my discussion about civics. Civics education has become one of our main focus in the Social Studies Department at the high school. We have kind of jumped up to find ways in which we can embed civics and civics curriculum into our current curriculum that we already have. We know that currently, the social science frameworks for the state are under review, and there's a draft due in 2018. And based on all of what I've read and attended conferences on, is that it seems that there will be a lot more emphasis placed back on civics that was lost in the 2003 version of our framework. So, we're excited to bring civics back and have that focus be back in the classroom. So, teachers in our department, in the Social Studies Department, will spend, have spent last year and next year, this year and next year, looking at civic skills and knowledge, trying to find ways to embed them. We're doing this through crosswalk documentation with the National Council of Social Studies, C3 framework, which is not only being college and career-ready, but civic-ready, too, which was the piece that was really missing in the past. The state is also focusing in this direction in terms of how do we embed our, bring civics back into getting our students ready for life after high school. We have a graduate course offering that we offered last year and will be offering again this year around embedding civics in the K-12 classroom. We also have a fifteen PDP course on embedding civics, and one of, it's a Google Classroom course for our middle school teachers. And then, we have another opportunity for our high school teachers and social studies that will be doing a civics-related utilizing podcast in the classroom. So, there's plenty of civics podcasts that are out there, especially my favorite, Sixty Seconds Civics. It's awesome. Check it out. It's great. Good little plug. So, also, recently, we have been, I know the students over here, the lovely ladies over here, brought up the Edward M. Kennedy Visit. So, today, we had three of our students, Sam being one of those students today that were interviewed, Viness Malanson of the Lowell Sun. We also had a teacher, Craig Vitale, who was interviewed as well. Hopefully, that story will be running soon, this week, I hope. And the Edward M. Kennedy Institute for the United States Senate is right on Columbia Point, right next to the JFK Library Museum, where we've taken our juniors to every year. And now, we've tried to expand a program for our US History I students, our sophomores, but we were able to offer it this year to US History I students, some of our AP, US History classes, and also our mock trial and our AP Government students. So, we had a wide variety, sophomores through seniors, that were able to go to the EMK Institute this year and participate in a Senate simulation. So, when they walk into the building, they actually walk into a mock Senate chamber, and it looks, it's an exact replica. It's beautiful. Students all get to act as if they were a senator. They get all kinds of information about their, their state that they're representing. They work on some morning agendas, and they decide that they are going to work on a specific bill. We had students work on an immigration bill, students work on a farm bill, and students work on a national security bill as well. The students have absolutely raved about it, and I'll let Sam, in a few minutes, talk even more about it. We also have been trying to bring more of our elected officials in, and those during an election year have, have brought in, just last year, we had both Nikki Sangerson and Woford come in and speak to our students. We've been reaching out to the League of Women Voters in the past and also in the town hall as well to try to increase the relationship between our students and the school and have them have a better understanding of what, how their town works for them, really. We have a number of electives as well, like the English department. So, we have our legal rights, our speech and debate, common law and trial procedures, our international relations course, psychology courses, sociology courses, AP Psych and AP Government. So, we try to really offer students, we do have students in that wing, even though we don't have a fourth-year requirement in Social Studies, we have students in our wing all four years, and oftentimes doubling up or even tripling up, as I've seen many a year. So, that's been absolutely fabulous. I'm going to introduce right now Sam Orfanos, who is a twelfth-grader also at CHS, and he has taken our World History classes, our US History Honor Class, our AP US History Class, AP Government, Sociology. He will be taking Psychology, right, coming up in the, in the future. Mr. Cole had selected him when I asked for a student representative that would really give a good, be a good representative for the Social Studies Department, because he's so informed and so engaged and so passionate about the social sciences. And he really likes to examine cause-effect relationships of historical events and how we can learn from them. So, he's a wonderful individual, and I'll let him take it from here.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Sam Orfanos. I'm a senior at Chumsford High School. Very happy to be here with you all today. My, my passion for history has existed since I was very young, started by my father in me. He's a big history buff. I'd go out on a limb and say that more of our dinnertime conversations have been about World War II than the average family, and my dog is named after a World War II fighter I don't claim to be the greatest scholar, but I do claim to have a great passion for this subject, more so than other subjects in school, just because, like Ms. Quinn said, I've always been fascinated with this cause-and-effect relationship from events and history. In middle school, we started talking about, I believe it was eighth-grade World History we first started with feudalism, the Magna Carta, the Catholic Church, the indulgences, that type of thing. And if you look at events that we're learning about in classes today, everything is connected. And I don't think you can say that as easily about other subjects, and I've always loved that. So, in ninth grade, part two of that class, I believe, was another World History class. I had that class with Mr. Cole, ninth grade, World History H2, I believe it was, and that was the beginning of seeing how dedicated our social studies program truly is. Mr. Cole took my weak knowledge of World War II events and turned it into a desire to know why they happened, how they happened, and how the future was impacted by their happening, if that makes sense. So, after that year, I kind of realized that was my subject of the four core subjects. Everyone has one favorite, mine is Social Studies. And I started taking the honors-level classes because before middle school, I didn't really know those existed, so I started taking advantage of them. Took AP US History last year with Ms. Gilbert. US History I honors the year before with Ms. Durkin, both of whom, like Mr. Cole, greatly enhanced my knowledge and passion for the subject. And this year, I have the privilege again to be taking AP Government with Mr. Cole, but Mr. Cole, he's a very, very knowledgeable man, and he's hilarious, too. It's, it's very fun to be in class with him, and I, I cannot honestly say that about some of my other teachers. So, as Ms. Quinn said, we went to the Edward M. Kennedy Senate Simulation. It was, I believe it was last Tuesday, and as she said, we took on the role of various senators with actual numbers and cases, issues, real issues talked about by the Senate. Immigration is a big one. I was assigned to be the Republican Senator from Texas, which I thought was, was very, it's very different than, than we're familiar with here in Massachusetts, I think that's safe to say. Yeah, but that's, that was the beauty of it, you know, to be open to a new perspective. One of the key issues on my, everyone had a tablet with their agenda on it, basically, and it said, "One of my issues is farming," and I was very surprised to see farming in a political spectrum, but then, you know, it started making sense. I'm like, oh, Texas, all right. And it was, all in all, a very informative, in-depth study of how the Senate actually works, and for someone like myself, I think that- And for someone like myself, I think that was of great advantage. And I know that a lot of others feel that way as well. I talk to my friends. We all had a lot of fun. We were very intrigued by its parallels to global relations, because none of us really knew how the Senate worked as far as structural stuff, you know, the numbers, two senators and all that. But my friends in the International Relations Club drew parallels immediately to the domestic and global functions of a group passing a bill or a law or something like that. So I'm very happy that our department is doing this next year. And I think that it will inspire future students like myself, not just from that, but from the dedication of the staff in the social studies department in the Chumpford Public Schools. Thank you.
If you'd like to give you the same opportunity you gave your fellow senior?
My number one school is Boston University. I'm going to probably enter undecided, but I will probably do something in the field of politics, philosophy, or English.
Well, you'll appreciate this short story. I had to do a presentation on how government works along your line. So I did the whole thing. Mel King, this is during the busing crisis, was in the room. And after I got all done, he said, "Nice job. Now, now let me tell you how it really works." So I was humbled in a hurry. It was an exciting place.
There was a question.
Yeah, sure.
Your Senate experience is interesting, because I think it gave you insight into what really matters in politics is local. What exposure have you had to local politics, civics?
I can't say that I have a great deal of experience with local politics.
Are any classes, is it offered in your classes? Have you seen any classes that, you know, talk about the Board of Selectmen or, you know, the school committee and where it fits in and all that?
As far as, at this level of the school committee, I mean, you know, it's touched upon in every class when you talk about what's going on in the town. But I could say AP Government, for sure, is entirely about politics, the structure of politics, inner workings of politics, and international relations as well, because I think that there are a lot of parallels between those things. So in a shorter answer, not at the level of the school committee, but of things that can apply to that, yes.
Well, maybe you should consider running for town meeting rep.
Maybe one day.
Sure. First of all, I'd like to thank you for bringing these two brilliant young men, students, in front of us. It's always good to hear the work that's being done by teachers in the schools. Our job is not to go in the schools and create curriculum. Our job is not to go into the schools and evaluate. Our job is to make sure that the leadership that's doing what they need to do is being held accountable. And I'll tell you what, you guys are pretty impressive. But I just have really one question. What's the name of your dog?
Mitchell. Pete Mitchell.
That's a fighter jet?
Yes.
Nice. Congratulations, guys. Best of luck.
Thank you.
And think of Northeastern University if you have an opportunity to, or MIT. They're Boston schools.
BU is fine.
Forget BU, MIT, Northeastern.
So to get to Barbara's question, thank you, Sam. We actually are working on developing a civics course that would be a semester class. And really, because we've evaluated our program and seen what we have and what we have to offer, we are looking at incorporating or having the focus be much more on local and how to get involved with local government and giving an understanding, developing an understanding. So that, we're getting there.
There's some internships, I'm sorry, internships available. I know through the Town Clerk's Office, where a lot of activity takes place, that they've had a number of internships. So that's a way you guys are all done, but I mean, other people can get involved.
Yep. Yeah, certainly. And we've reached out, utilizing the AP Government class, too. For students who are really interested, we provide that information for them as well. Just to get back to the EMK, like you was talking about earlier, we try to do a lot more than just having the kids learn the information from their textbook and learning the structure and learning dates and learning history just from reading, that we try to really make sure that we have immersive experiences for our student. I just wrote the grant proposal again to bring our archaeologists back to our seventh grade program, where the students are active, working with old fossils that date back to Tutankhamun. It's just absolutely amazing. And, you know, creating their own archaeological dig. And our world geography program is looking at bringing in this giant blow-up globe that the students can walk in and out of. So we have our prison field trip with our sociology classes. The, we take our juniors to the JFK. We have students going to the MFA, all kinds of different plays, The Christmas Carol, The Outsiders. I know that social studies department teachers are trying to organize and work on the eighth grade field trips to New York City. We have our senior book club in the English department, where we have members from the Senior Center reading the same novels that some of our senior classes are and then coming in and having discussions. Those are absolutely wonderful. So we really try to find different and unique waves to get the students engaged in the curriculum. It's just so much fun, just to see the kids at the Senate Simulation and to see them, you know, see a big globe and go to the plays and have a whole new perspective and understanding of the literature and the content that they're learning about in the classroom.
And also in English, we do the same thing. Whenever there's anything related to what we're reading or doing in class that we can plan a field trip around, we do that. I know that the seniors are going to see a play, I think, two weeks from now, that they're reading in class. We're hoping next year to be able to take some students to see To Kill a Mockingbird, because it's going to be opening in New York. We're all excited, because we thought it was this year, but it's next year.
So just so that you know, we wanted to give you a little bit more on what the teachers are currently doing at the high school, in addition to professional development. We have a number of teachers who are busy writing those student recommendations at the high school level. Some of our teachers write over 20 recommendations a year, if not more. We know our English teachers, particularly both inside and outside of the Writing for College classroom, are working to help our students finalize and firm up those college essays, which takes a lot of work, and it's a lot of effort on these guys' parts, and they're getting some great guidance on those essays. So teachers at all of those levels in both disciplines will continue to work with students before, during, and after school to support their efforts in academics and extracurriculars. And when you do get the slideshow, you know, we will have all of our social studies and English teachers that participate in activities outside of the classroom. It's a grand list, and so they're really working on trying to be part of the community of school that they're in. And I'm going to let Margaret talk a little bit about the AP scores, real quick.
Sure. And I think, too, the school-wide involvement with clubs. When I was making the list, I was shocked. Almost every single member of our department does a club or something after school. And I know it's, the same is true for social studies. But I think it really shows how invested the teachers in this department are, not just in their students in the classroom, but in this community and being a part of it and really getting to know their students to form connections that really help them deliver an even more exceptional education. So the AP scores, I'm very excited as our AP teachers. So this is really, I think, a huge kudos to Matt Bartos, Mike Shea, and Steve Cordomarch, who are teaching the AP courses this year, that our average lit AP score was 4.1 and our average AP language score is a 4.2. And when they received the letter reporting those scores, the president of College Board actually said, "Don't panic. This was a record-low year. We're evaluating why a lot of students didn't do so well nationally." Our scores were still exceptional. So I think it really shows that in a record, you'll, sorry, a record-low year nationally, our students still performed at the high caliber that they always do. And I think that's something that we should be really proud of.
So thank you again for letting us come and talk to you about all the things we did. And I'm so sorry we took up so much time, but I think it was really important for us to kind of express to you all the great work that the teachers are doing at the middle and high school levels.
While we're on the topic, I note you're still wearing two hats, covering social studies and English. Is the ELA coordinator position in our budget this year? It wasn't filled last year. It was in the budget last year.
Well, no. It was in the budget a year ago, and we didn't fill it. And then when we put the budget together for the current year, we switched to fill the Science Coordinator, not the English Coordinator.
Do we project it will be in the budget next year?
Yeah, we're just actually starting putting the budget together in the next couple of weeks for some type of a January presentation, but it's certainly something that we're shooting for.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank you guys. And Alenda mentioned to me, too, very much apologize for the technical difficulties tonight as far as the presentation goes. We do have copies of the presentation in front of us. So when you were going through it, we actually do have it in front of us to be able to review. I don't want you to think that we don't. And for the other group coming up afterward, we, all of our members do have the presentation. We oftentimes project up on the TV screen for the viewing audience at home. So unfortunately, they weren't able to see the slides. It is on our website, so if anyone from home was watching, they can go to the website. And it is, the slideshow is posted there. But thank you very much for coming in tonight and producing. And we're sorry we weren't able to accomplish that last spring. We just kind of ran out of time with rescheduling, but I very much enjoyed tonight. So, thank you, guys. Good luck with your college applications. The next report up this evening, the second report of the evening, is I'm going to invite up Katie Sims, our Department Coordinator for Health, Phys Ed, Family and Consumer Science, maybe something else. Tom Wright, our Coordinator for Guidance Services. And Jeff Parks, our Principal at Parker Middle School. And they're going to talk a little bit about tonight, about the grade seven and eight youth risk behavior survey results, which the district received and which we participated in last year. So thank you very much, guys, for coming, and turn it over to you for your presentation. And again, we do have it in front of us to be able to follow along.
Should've seen it in colors.
Hi, thank you for having us tonight. I'm Katie Sims. I'm the PE Health, Family and Consumer Science Department Coordinator.
Jeff Parks, Principal of Parker Middle School.
And Tom Wright, School Counseling Coordinator for K-12.
So we're here tonight to give you an overview of the seventh and eighth grade youth risk behavior survey results. This is the first time that we've done the YRBS at the middle school level. We've done it for a number of years at the high school level, 20-plus years. Every other year or so, we've been able to give it to the entire high school. So we started the conversation probably a couple of years ago, after looking at the high school data, starting to see some of the numbers rise at younger grades. Maybe it would be a good idea to start doing the survey at younger grade levels, since they're starting to participate in some risky health behaviors at a younger age and then make some potential curriculum programming changes sooner rather than wait till they get to high school. So we gave the survey to all of the seventh graders and all of the eighth graders at Parker and McCarthy in February. And we had about, there was an opt-out option for all students. So the percent participation rate was about 89%, which is pretty good, especially for the first year doing the survey. Usually at the high school, we are around low 90s for participation rate. And the participation rate factors in two things. One, it factors in the opt-out students, but it also factors in the students that are absent that day. So one other thing that we talked about after the fact, after doing the survey and getting the results, was the fact that we did this on a half-day. And typically, attendance on half-days is a little bit lower than a regular school day. So that might be something, if we just look to do this in the future, we might want to look at maybe changing the day and doing it on a regular school day rather than half of a, half-day. So we were able to get the funding for the results for this survey through a grant that McCarthy wrote. So the grant was through the Greater Loyal Health Alliance. And Kurt McPhee, myself, Sue Rosa, and a couple of parents at McCarthy put the grant together, and paying for the results was part of that grant, along with some other program, programming things that McCarthy was interested in getting. So there are, the survey is 68 questions, so it's a little bit less than the high school. The high school was around 99 questions. And when we received the data, it's broken up into like 10 major topic areas. So today, or tonight, what we're going to do for you is kind of just give you an overview of those major topic areas and just a piece of each one. So we're not going to break down all 68 questions, but through, going through the 10 major topic areas, we cover multiple questions in each area, as you'll see as we go through. So some of the areas that we'll cover tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about the data on safety, suicide, illegal drug use, sexual behavior, physical activity, violence, tobacco use, HIV and AIDS education, dietary behavior, and alcohol use. So we're just going to give you a little bit of snapshot on each one of those and then open it up for questions at the end. So, Tom, is that it?
So as Katie mentioned, we'll briefly walk you through the data, and then we'll talk about some of the programming we have in place to support our students. And as Katie mentioned, questions to anything that you want to address. The first slide is on safety. And as you can see, there are graphs there indicating the different subject areas. From left to right, there were topics such as never or rarely wear, wore a seatbelt, never rarely wear bicycle helmet. The next would be ride with a drinking driver in the past 30 days. And you'll notice there's a theme. Different questions had a timeframe appended to it. So that just means at least once in that cycle. And then lastly, sent and received sexually explicit messages, photos electronically, and that was one or more times in the past 12 months. Review the data briefly. Oh, yes. And I apologize, the theme across all of the slides. It begins with, the first column is the females, the second column is the males, and the last column would be the total average. And I just want to make sure I pointed that out, as we're not looking at a color copy. So it's, you can tell, it's just not overtly evident. The next area was on violence-related behaviors. And again, it's kind of a broad umbrella. As you'll see, there's four different categories where the data is broken down. The first, carried a weapon, such as a gun knife or a club, on school property. Next, injured self on purpose. That could mean cutting an eraser to the arm, something of that nature. Next, been bullied on school property. And lastly, experienced cyberbullying. The following slide addresses sexual behavior. And there are two categories on this slide. The first, ever had sexual intercourse. And the second is two or more sexual partners, and in parentheses, it says, "in their lifetime." And the last of the data I'll share with you is suicide consideration and attempts. So the first piece of data has to deal with seriously thought about killing yourself. So that's referred to as suicidal ideation. And that's one time in the past 12 months a student had thought about taking their life. The data is broken down for grade seven and grade eight, as you can see on your slides. And then next to it, the next step up is the actual attempt to take one's life once in the past 12, one or more times in the past 12 months. And again, that data is broken down for grade seven and grade eight.
Thank you. I'm going to briefly address the next three topic areas. And the first I'll talk about is tobacco use. And the three categories that are highlighted are cigarette use over a lifetime, recent cigarette use. And for the purposes of the survey, it was, recent is considered within the past 30 days. And then the last category is ever used an e-cigarette, an electronic cigarette.
Can I just jump in for a question? Anyone's welcome to this. Like, when we look at, say, the tobacco use, one are, you know, more concerning, let's say, suicide consideration, one prior to that. How exactly, like, when you try to think about student responsiveness and, you know, how accurately their responses are really reflecting their answers here, can you explain the testing, not the testing format, but the survey-type format? Are the kids in a classroom when they're taking this? Is it, you know, kind of one-on-one? Is it computer-based? You know, do we get a sense from talking to the kids either before or after?
Like, how true they're responding to these questions?
Yeah, so there, I felt like the students that we interact, that at least I interacted with at school were very comfortable. They, there's a script that goes along with it, and so all the proctors, the teachers, would read the same exact script at the same exact time to all of the kids. It was paper-based, paper-based, multiple choice, you know, with their options. It was handed out, collected, put back in the envelopes, and then collected by, actually, Katie came and then gave it to the organization who scored them. It was very clear in the script that it was completely anonymous and used to collect data for us to help develop programs and find out where we think students need additional support. So, I do feel, I mean, certainly, there's got to be some, you know, there has to be some margin for error that they take into account when they're scoring. But I felt like the students had a clear understanding that the purpose of this was to, was to help them and their classmates.
Okay. Well, Tom, I'm sorry, Tom can correct me, but because the high school was given over a period of time.
Yep.
Because we had the same question, you know, how many kids are fooling around with this? And the category difference is pretty, you know, for one reason or another, is pretty consistent.
Yep.
So, if it's out of whack, it's because there's a big trend. But there's very little, you know, fooling around with it, because when you have that, now, this is new, so you don't have that yet.
Right.
But at the high school level, you know, it was very consistent.
Year over year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea, I mean, I know you have an idea. Last year, I remember very clearly when Steve Murray came in, and I think you were with him, and he gave us a number of 52. That was 52 students who were hospitalized for suicide attempts.
Yes.
What does 24% represent? What's the actual, for any of these percentages?
Let me take out my calculator.
That's females.
Oh, right.
You don't have to do this right now.
Yeah.
You can get back to me.
I'd be happy to get you to break down.
Just to understand your question.
100.
So, this 24% is about, I can't even say these words, about killing yourself. But Steven was hurting yourself. I mean, you can hurt yourself, but I would think...
Oh, Principal Murray?
Yes.
That was referral out for emergency psych eval?
I see.
For suicidal ideation or act upon.
So...
So, it could be either or.
So, either thinking about, potentially making a plan.
Typically...
Seriously enough that they were required.
So, it would have to fall into this, is this the category then Steven's talking about?
Yes.
Or is there more to this, or more to Steven's?
He was kind of, I believe, talking about both of these categories together. So, the thought of it and the actual attempt.
And I'll say on behalf of the counselors, and I think Jeff would support me in this, typically, a referral out for an emergency psych evaluation, that requires either an attempt has been made, or the student has a plan. So, if I go home tonight, I'm going to do XYZ to take my own life.
What are the other years? What do you have to see if this is trending up or trending, praying trending down? I mean, what can you provide us with, or let us know, or?
Go ahead.
So, we're going to talk a little bit about some of the programming that were put in place in the last couple of years that touches upon some of these concerning areas. As far as, we really don't have any previous data for the middle school level, which is one unfortunate thing for us. So, we have nothing to kind of go off of. But we do have the high school data that we can look at as a reference, because although the number of questions are different, the 68 questions that the middle school students were asked, the high school students were also asked those same questions. So, we can compare numbers a little bit, as far as trending goes. So, if you take a look at suicide ideation and attempts at the high school, the numbers are still concerning, but they're on the decline, which is a very big positive, I think. They've been on the decline for the last couple of years. So, it's something that we're going to continue to work on, as far as programming, curriculum, those types of things. So, now, we can take that information with us, that data, that knowledge, this new data, and kind of work more at the middle school level.
The high school has more ammunition, or more ability to solve these problems than your middle schools. You have more people that can support, or than your middle schools. Am I wrong to say that?
As far as staffing, is that what you're referring to?
Programs and accessibility.
I would say to comment on that, as far as just ratios, the counselor to student ratio is lower at the high school, and the psychologist to student ratio is lower at the high school.
Right.
I think to Sal's point, just real quick, this is the first year we've had the middle school survey, so this is going to be our baseline year, as far as having data. We haven't administered this in the middle schools before, so we don't have any kind of pre-data on the middle schools.
Jay, what about other, like, schools? I mean, there must be data that we could, although Westford is not Chumsford, but, I mean, are there other schools that have asked these same questions?
Well, I did talk to the company that does do our data analysis. I called him after the fact, after we got the data, and I said, "When we get the high school data, it's compared to previous years, and it's compared to mass data." And when we got the middle school data, it wasn't compared to anything. I didn't expect it to have past data, but I thought maybe it would have mass data to compare it to. And he said it would be like comparing apples to oranges, because in the mass data, grades six, seven, and eight are included in that data. And we only did seven and eight, so that's something Kurt, Jeff, Tom, and I have talked about. If we continue to do this survey again, we might put sixth grade in there. So, then we'll have past data, this data to look at as well, in addition to mass data to compare it to, which I think is an important piece.
Oh, my God, it's all point.
Did you have something, sir?
Yeah, I have two questions. Firstly, do you guys do a follow-up survey after the course is finished, to see how the data's changed? So, the objective, I imagine, would like, is that you start off with the survey, see what's going on, and you can follow-up survey, see how the data's changing after the course, which I think could be used to evaluate the effectiveness of the course, and see if you're getting any positive trends in that direction.
So, I think, I think I can answer your question. So, he was asking about whether we do like a pre and a post for health education. This really isn't, health education in the curriculum is certainly a piece of this, that we look at after the fact. But it's not, that's not why we do this. It's not like before a health class or after the health class. We gave every single student in seventh and eighth grade this survey on the same day at the same time, which is the way to do it to get the most valid and reliable results. And not every student is actually in health education in February, because it's semester-based classes. So, the health curriculum is certainly a piece, but it's not really what we're centering the data around. We're looking at other programming, other offerings that we have in the school, in addition to the health education curriculum.
Would it be safe to say that after you refer to the hospital, that you don't get anything back because of HIPAA laws? In other words, you don't, you put them into the program, we probably don't get anything back, right?
So, what we like to do is a re-entry meeting and plan. So, the, whether it be the building principal, or the dean at the high school, along with the counselor, hopefully, the psychologist that's available, talk about, and what happens is the family will bring back the discharge paperwork. At that time, they may have provided the diagnosis, or a suggestion for a treatment plan. Sometimes, after an emergency psych eval, they, there's a couple of different things. One is, they decide that the student's not a risk or harm to themselves, and they send them back to school, maybe recommend outside counseling. There is what's called a partial program, where they may go to school during the day, and then afternoon, go home, or the opposite, go to a day program, but they get to sleep at home. And then the last option being full hospitalization, which could be for a period of three, seven, 10, 45 days. So, it really varies, it does vary. Can I make one recommendation? Because I know, we knew this was going to be a little bit of a wormhole, because of the information there. Maybe if we could just move forward with the data, we'll address some of the programming we're doing, and then we'll do more questions at the end.
Sure.
I just, yes, I apologize, I have, I just want to ask one question.
Yep.
If I'm reading this the right way. So, if I look at this suicide consideration and attempts, am I wrong to say that in seventh grade, that 27% of the student body has seriously thought about committing suicide? Am I reading, if I add the girls and the boys, would that be percentage of the whole student body?
No, because the girls are 13%, of the girls, the boys 14% of the boys. And then combined, the average would be 14% of the seventh grade student body.
So, 14% of the student body, and my end for some reason is on the boys, on the, on the eighth grade, tried to kill himself, I don't know if everybody's, I don't have it on my end. What is the number of the total?
4%?
Yes.
4%?
4%.
Eighth grade total?
Yeah.
Yep, 4%. So, it's actually 4% for seventh grade and eighth grade, on that right-hand side.
Thank you.
Why don't you finish up? Yeah, thank you. We fully recognize that a lot of this, and again, it being a baseline, and now that we're talking about our younger population, it becomes, you know, potentially even more alarming. So, we recognize that a lot of these things, you know, are going to be concerning for all of us. And believe me when I tell you that we share the same concern that you folks have too. So, moving on to alcohol use. The first two categories are similar to tobacco, and the first being ever had a drink of alcohol. In the survey, it's described as more than a few sips, to put some context to it. The second is recent alcohol use, again, in the past 30 days. And then the last category is attended parties in district where alcohol use is allowed. And so, 3% of our total population said that they had participated in something like that. And then the last area that I'll talk about tonight is illegal drug use. And there are four categories that that's broken into. The first is marijuana. The second, prescription medication, and in the survey, it's described as not prescribed for you, or for the, for the survey taker, somebody else's prescription. The third is inhalants, and then the last category reported on was steroids. Katie?
So, I'll do the last two data slides. One on diet, the first one's on dietary behavior, and the second one is on physical activity. So, there's three different categories that we pulled data from for the dietary behavior. One, how the students that describe themselves as being about the right weight. The second one, students that report that they're currently trying to lose weight. And then the third area, students reporting that they are trying to currently gain weight. And just to clarify one thing, I was showing someone these slides, and they were trying to add up the different categories. They're actually answers to different questions, so the percentages don't add up from category to category. So, I thought that was a good point that the person brought up. So, I thought I would just mention that, because they are, these three categories are very similar.
But what it does say is 40% of our girls feel that they're not the right weight.
Correct.
Well, might be more than that.
The N is the number of the students, which you did 80 students, correct? How many students took this survey?
722.
Oh, 722, okay, I thought it was the wrong thing.
Well, it can only be, to that point, it only can be...
I mean, it's self-image.
And then the next slide, the last data slide that we'll go over, and then we'll go over some programming, and open it up to some more questioning. So, the physical activity slide, they, the physical activity major topic area is quite a wide range of different topics under it. You wouldn't necess, I wouldn't necessarily think that they all fall into physical activity, but that's how they were grouped in the data analysis. So, the first one, students reporting exercising at least three days out of the past seven days that they took the survey. The second one is the number of students that report watching three or more hours of television, on average, on a school day. The third one, number of students that report that they get seven hours or less of sleep on average a night. And then the last one, the number of students reporting that they eat breakfast every day.
I hate to come back to these questions.
No.
That means, if I look at the girls and boys, first one being the boys, whether it's girls or boys, it could be up to as much as 40 to 50% of our kids don't eat breakfast.
Every day.
Every day.
Every day, yep. So, there were multiple answers. It could be that they eat four days a week, three days a week, two days a week, zero days a week. So, this is just the percentage of students that eat breakfast every single day. So, that's kind of the overview of the major topic areas, and how the data was broken down into. So, we thought we would just share a little bit with you about some programming that we've been working on in the past couple of years at the middle and the high school level. They are connected. These eighth graders that took the survey are now ninth graders at the high school, they took it in February. So, I thought it was important to highlight a little bit of both. And then some of, just the health curriculum in general at the middle and high school level, and some changes and additions that were made there. So, one thing that we recognize is that they have health education at the middle school level in every grade, five through eight. Another positive to health education is the health education graduation requirement that was passed last year, which is effective for the current junior class, so FY19, so that's a positive. The middle school health education curriculum was updated last summer, and is currently in the revision stage, and is almost final, but they're working on that now. There are two units in the middle school health curriculum that the school counselors come into the health education classroom and co-teach with the health education teachers, which started, it started about five years ago at Parker, and probably two or three years ago at McCarthy. So, the school counselors come into the health education class, stay there for two units, one being the SOS unit, which is the signs of suicide curriculum that we do. And the second unit that they come in for support is positive coping skills and strategies to give students. So, if the students are feeling anxious, or stressed, or worried about something, health teachers and the school counselors set up positive coping skill stations for them to go through, listening to music, participating in physical activity, a quiet spot for meditation. So, the kids have an opportunity to try all of those positive coping skills out, and see what works for them. So, when they're feeling anxious, stressed, worried about something, they have kind of a toolbox to go to, to use for some of these, for these issues. We've brought in a couple of different programs the past couple of years. One being, at the high school, we brought in a new Breaking Free From Depression curriculum. We started that a year and a half ago, so all of the freshmen are getting that. And the school counselors are actually co-teaching with the health teachers on that, too, which both the SOS and the Break Free From Depression programs have been really great. And there's been a lot of positive feedback for having the school counselors in the class with them. So, if you need to take a student out at any time, if you're worried about a student, you have two adults in the room. So, that's a great thing to have, so the school counselor can, you know, very discreetly talk to a student, and be another person in the building that they can go to, to talk to. Do you want to add to any of the programming?
No, I just like, I mean, that's one of the things that I'm most proud of and excited about, that I feel like it's so powerful to have the health educator in the room, who the students have a good rapport with and see all the time. But then you have access to the counselor, who a lot of kids might not know who that person is. And to have them just be accessible, and another, you know, person that they can go to when things come up. And I just have found that the relationship between our counselors and our students has really grown. And I, and I think that that's, really has something to do with it, that they just, the accessibility, and the name of the face, and the comfort, comfortable rapport that they develop, I think it's really gone a long way to help some kids.
Sure. Another aspect that... Sure. Um, another aspect that we highlighted this year is the first of the next three years, where in our strategic plan, we'll actually have a social emotional learning goal. This year, we have a consultant in to help us with PBIS, Positive Behavioral Intervention.
Support.
And support. So many acronyms, I apologize. So with that, we have building-based teams, because every building is different, has a different culture, different community, although very similar across the district, obviously. And then in those buildings, they're working on different aspects of the day where they can, um, as an entire school, doesn't matter on the grade, you're all working on different skill sets, focusing on different areas of the school where maybe problematic behaviors arise. Maybe some sort of ticket system where they can identi, you know, get referrals from teachers on, where maybe, um, major or minor problems are occurring in the building, then you can identify. So like, if we were, you know, just to resort back to that bullying aspect, where, you know, bullying exists a certain amount in, uh, within the school, you know, maybe that's some of those, we may now identify where that is occurring just through adopting these PBIS practices. So I think that's another element that is going to help support our students. And just as a, uh, a, a school-wide initiative that, and that, all actuality, once we really started doing this and digging in deeper with Eric Mann last year and this year, we've already had some of these in, in place. It's just happened, um, organically. You know, and I, I used to work at the, at the Parker prior to becoming the coordinator, and, you know, something that they've started is the, the pride program, which, you know, in the positive pause, and, and, and that's just trickled across the district. And the high school recognizes students through the pride acronym. And in general, that is just one of many aspects that, um, in the district, we've been doing to support in praise, positive behaviors.
I think one other positive to highlight is in the past two years, we've added three psychologists in the district. I think that's very important and was very much needed and is a great thing. So there was a psychologist added for the high school, so now that they have three psychologists. And then the two psychologists that were shared at the elementary level, they're no longer shared. And now all four elementary schools have their own psychologists. So I think that's one positive to highlight as well.
And then I think before, oh, sorry.
Go ahead. I was going to do the next slide, so go ahead.
I think you can do it. So, yeah, before we go into discussion, um, you know, the, the last thing that we've done, and we met last week, and Katie's really kind of spearheaded this effort, is Kurt and I each reached out to us, to the staff at both middle schools and asked for volunteers to serve on a committee to, to look at this, to evaluate what we're doing, and then to help decide the direction that we'll be going. And we had a great response, again, had a meeting last week. And it's a variety of classroom teachers, specialists, psychologists. We also have the, uh, the town health educator, Amanda Glazer, who's on the committee. And then Brian Ubeli, who is the middle school liaison to the Chelmsford Police Department, is also participating in the committee. So we feel like we have a great team in place there to, to, to kind of help us shape the next direction that we'll go.
Dennis, you're right.
Yeah, well, um, as you can see from most of our faces, these are surprising results to us. You people are in the buildings every day. Uh, did you look at these results? Were they surprising to you? Was there a particular area that you looked at and said, wow, didn't realize that this was actually what's going on in our schools?
I think there's certainly some concerning areas. I think the trickiest part about the first time you do this is nothing to compare it to number. But there was definitely, when we sat down and looked at this, we had the same facial reaction as you did.
Yeah, because, you know.
There's definitely some concerning numbers.
Yeah, but you work with them every day, so you know the kids, you, you know.
Yeah.
So I'll say too, that the, um, you know, particularly the suicide consideration and attempts, you know, it, it, it looks high, and it was, and it's definitely concerning. The instances and the cases that we have in the school of students who might be sent out wouldn't support these high numbers, which tells me that's, that some of this is going on outside of school and not necessarily getting reported to us, that kids may be thinking about things like that, right? So that, that's concerning.
Jeff, something?
I have to say, I, I think that all of this, in my view, is positive because it means we're, we're not ignoring it. So in that aspect, I really appreciate these numbers. Some are a little scary, others are encouraging to me. I have to tell you, every time I go to an, an elementary school event, I am stopped by teachers who are at crisis. And these are elementary school students. They want therapeutic classrooms. Do you track data on students at the elementary level by behavior? If there are incidents reported to the principal or any, is there any way to, to kind of get a feel of the flow? Does it stop at third grade, or does it continue on to sixth, seventh, eighth, and then high school?
I will say, so with the, um, the recent work with PBIS, and...
And by the way, I should plug Dr. Hirsch's webpage. She has a site for acronyms.
Oh, nice.
Very helpful, yeah.
I bet it has a lot of hits too, if you look at that.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
That's okay. Um, but what I was going to say is, they're actually, at the elementary level now, they're talking about categorizing, um, so not necessarily counselor and psychologist referrals, but, uh, major and minor incidents, what those are. And then from there, being able to come up with an action plan, okay, how are we going to address these majors? You know, um, the minors, that's typical, it's age-appropriate.
Right.
You know, well, age inappropriate, but you, expected, expected behaviors sometimes. As far as, um, the heavier, heavier data regarding, um, self-injurious behavior by elementary students or students who experience trauma, um, there's not, I think we could go back and look at last year and have the folks look at that, but a formal system, I would, I would say no. But I think what's going to help that is now that we have a full-time psychologist in each building, and it's not like every day, you know, trying to be proactive and be in the classrooms. Just about every day, the counselors have lunch groups for every single lunch. So they're certainly proactively working with the students, but to catch a breath and, and do the, the data piece can be challenging. So that's where we're at.
I, I can also add to that, the, um, through the transition process, so before the fourth graders come up, I'll spend time with the principals of two, of the two sending schools, and I know that Kurt does the same thing. Our counselors meet with the counselors from the elementary level to learn about, you know, different issues, some of the, the, uh, more concerning behaviors. And then the psychologist as well, but with that addition, it certainly is going to be helpful. But those folks are heavily involved in helping the kids move from between the schools.
So, you have something? Three questions, one statement. First question, please answer this based on you, not what the board, the consensus, the team. You can't solve everything at once, but if there's one thing that you, Dr. Parks, would like to see help in, what would it be?
Speaking for, for our school.
I don't, I don't care what it is, just give me one problem that you have that you would like to solve or you would need support in, or you would need resources in.
So I would like to see, I, we, we would need additional support for our counselors. But we also need to have more ongoing training to give our teachers, who are with the kids every day, the ability to, to handle all of the different behaviors that they're being faced with. You know, their background and training is, is ninety percent about their content area, you know, largely. So giving, giving our teachers a, a stronger ability to work with the, really the cha, we always say the changing face of the classroom right now, and, and that's where we're putting some effort now.
Tom, one thing that, different from everyone else, or it could be the same, but what do you think, one thing, that you would need support if you could fix anything right now?
I can't say it's different. I would, I would say, if I were to put numbers to what Jeff just said, because those are the two that came to my mind, and I'm not just saying that.
I believe you.
More social emotional support. And I'd, I'd want to talk to the principals and the counselors as to what that would be. Does it mean we had more school counselors? Does it mean we would need a social worker, someone who can go out into the community for, um, in homes that could use the resources, you know? So that would be the one area. And then, um, I just recently read an article that Jeff just cited as far as teacher training. When they come out of graduate work, a lot of it is in their, their pedagogy, their, their practice. So, um, additional training. But first and foremost, and I know we have finite resources, but I would say, grow my department.
Kate, I'm going to finish with you with, with a question before I make a statement. One thing that you would like to see, is it resources? Well, tell, tell me what it is.
Um, I'm going to be totally biased in my answer. I think, oh, the, students need more health education at this, in, in Chelmsford in general. They don't have any health education until they get to fifth grade. And then once they get to fifth grade, fifth and sixth graders see the health teachers once a week, so that adds up about thirty, around thirty classes an entire year. So if you take all of these topics, um, it's hard to squeeze in and, and do it with fidelity.
Right, so the solution, your opinion, your opinion on the solution for more health education is what? Starting at the grade level blank, they should be doing what?
Starting in kindergarten.
Starting in K.
Yep.
They should be having what?
Basic health, um, eating bre, just having conversations about eating breakfast. What's, 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 why is it important to eat breakfast? What's healthy, what's not healthy?
All the way up?
All the way up.
Okay. Now, so I asked my three questions. Thank you very much. I apologize for taking too much time of the board. I'm going to make a statement. Dr. Lang, money is, you know, not infinite, you know, it's very finite in our system, and I get that. But this school system over the past two years has, has been able to show how, how they can squirrel money away. For example, three hundred thousand dollars in the cafeteria services. Is there any way that we could start providing what the elementary schools do? Or something in the middle schools, something at the high schools? And I don't know if it's opening up for breakfast, or keeping it open all day long, or having, does anybody know what fooder is? Food is these pop-up kitchens that, that are just sweeping across the country, and, and really, they'll, they'll be all over the world. But they're pop-up kitchens, they go to businesses, and restaurants bring their food in, and they sell the food during the course of the day for a time slot. I'm not suggesting it's fooder, but I'm suggesting that if we had to, we could create these pop-up, and I'm just closing my eyes and thinking, these pop-up tables that are in the hallway that are maybe have one cafeteria working there, got worker there during the course of the day or during a period of time, and they're selling the apples and the juices. And they're just selling something because I can see a student, and I can recall saying, when I was a student, do I really want to walk down to the cafeteria? Because we used to have breakfast when I was a kid in high school. I don't, do I really want to walk all the way down? Oh, I'm walking by the table, this pop-up table, it's just a table with various things on it, and maybe the juices on ice, or the milks on ice, or the fruits and, you know, carrots or whatever it is. Just something so I'm grabbing. You know, can we just talk about that? Because if you tell me fifty percent of the seventh and eighth graders aren't eating breakfast, I'm going to tell you, the more they eat, the better their scores are going to be, period. That's, that, that's a fact. So, three questions. I know what I got to do for my homework. One statement, can we at least start talking about how to get more nutrition, more food, open for these kids? And not only for breakfast, but towards the end of the day when they start running out of gas?
Sure. Um, a couple, a couple of things. So, I mean, when it comes to some of the programming, I do think over the last couple of years and going forward, we're taking steps in the right direction as far as adding some supports to the district. So we are addressing head-on some of the social emotional learning challenges of kids. You've heard us talk about that, you know, for the last couple of years, it is a primary focus of ours. It's one of our second kind of strategic initiatives for the coming year and for the years to come. So that is a, a point of emphasis, if you want to call it that, for our programming. We have hit head-on, you know, by the addition of the three psychologists, say, at the elementary and the high school level, we're starting to actually, you know, add some staffing to those areas where we know we need to, um, to add, at staffing levels to, to allow greater access to kids, um, to that programming. We've also talked about, you know, expanding upon that even further. And, you know, is it additional guidance counselors, social workers, psychologists? We know that's going to be, um, you know, a, a direction and a focus of ours. We did pilot when it comes to, say, the, um, the nutrition program, uh, the breakfast program at the Harrington a couple of years ago, very well. We've, uh, the new food service director is, is on board now, kind of assessing where we're at with things. And we are talking about adding breakfast programs at the other three elementary schools. So there are these things that are, are in phase right now. I'd be happy to kind of put together some additional, um, kind of memo, some, some bullets for you of some of the ways that we're going about addressing this, when we think realistically within kind of the confines of our budgeting, when we can tackle some of these issues. And have the discussion with the school committees, we're getting ready for even next year's budget. I know Barbara mentioned earlier a topic about curriculum coordinators, but we're going to be preparing for the fiscal nineteen budget, really within the next couple of months. So it's timely, these discussions start now. And, um, you know, we start to surface these different needs in the district so that when we do approve a budget, we have things in, in place. But let me come back and actually provide you information with some of these things that are going on that may not just be highlighted here today, as far as, say, like those additional breakfast programs, things like that. I'll provide a follow-up report for you.
Dr. Lang, I, I think this. I think if you try to incorporate more money for training or, um, social emotional support or psychologists, a, any of those things into your budget, you'll eventually get, be, get told this, listen, we only have X amount of dollars, figure it out. What I think we should start talking about, and maybe the school committee, and maybe the teachers, and we could start to create this, listen, this is what we need to run the schools, okay? Which is X amount of millions of dollars. We're asking for more or less, whatever it is, nevertheless. However, what we'd like to propose, and put it in front of the town meeting, this kind of a program to say, now, this is a supplement, for, forget the budget. This is what we need to conduct ourselves every, every day. This is what we need, and just start showing some of these things. Because if you lump it all together, I know what, what they're going to do. They're going to have a business fain of mine, they're going to say, listen, you, there's no more slices to the pie. You got sixty million, that's it. However, we'll take what they'll give us, but let's have maybe a supplemental conversation of this is, this is over and above. If you lump it all together, you'll get lost in translation. If we separate it, we might be able to say, okay, this is your school budget, and we're going to allocate X number of dollars for, that nobody will vote against. I mean, this is, who, who's going to say no? But, but it's easy to say it if it's in one lump. So if, if we could have that discussion, maybe trying to create a different strategy on that, number one. And I, I love what we do at the elementary schools, I remember that at Harrington.
Right.
Middle schools and the high school, middle schools and the high school, uh, for, for food. And maybe we can talk about that, please. Thank you. That's it, I'm sorry.
I had one question. With the high school survey, was, was there ever a category of fights? I think we had to re, report to the state, maybe it wasn't part of this. That when there were accidents, you know, when there was, was a fight.
Yeah, you do still have to, yeah, anything physical has to still get reported.
Well, the thing that always bothered me about that is the, the difference in defining a fight. Because guys will push each other to avoid a fight, and some people will report that that's a fight. And other people have a knock-down drag-out. And, and to be honest, the reason it bothered me so much is that some districts should get big numbers. And I can honestly say that in all the time I was principal of the high school, in terms of real fights, total, probably a half dozen, because it doesn't happen. They, they, like I say, they're, they don't want to fight, you know, most of the time, they just want to maintain that. So that was a one statistic, and I, I'm sorry that it's not in here, so I don't belabor the point. But that always bothered me because the definition, you know, most of these are pretty clear-cut. But that was one that always bothered me, because you don't want to, you know, I want to be low, I don't want to be high. And, and some people had huge numbers because I think every time they pushed each other, they reported it as a fight. Anyway, no, I'm sorry.
I just have one last question. Um, with respect to behavior and discipline, when, when are parents notified? When do parents get involved? Is it every single time a student bolts in a, in an elementary school? When do we contact the parents and say, we've got a problem? Is it when they're, the child's action is dangerous to themselves or impacts the classroom?
I think there's two answers to that. So one, I would defer to Jeff on that piece, on the counseling piece of things. As I think all of you know, school counselors have a level of confidentiality, because we want to make sure the student feels like they have an adult that...
an adult that they can talk to, that is resourceful, that's knowledgeable, that can be helpful. And not all of the information's gonna go back to the parents, because that's why they're talking to us in the first place. Once the, something escalates to a level of harm to self, others, or property, that is then, then we bring parents into the fold. It, I'll, I'll expand beyond that. The level to which counselors involve the parents increases at the lower levels and will slowly dwindle a little bit as the, the kids developmentally become more mature. They understand what's kind of going on, and they're less susceptible to be as forthright with their counselor if they know there's gonna be a direct connection. So there's also an age-appropriate piece to that. Dr. Parks?
So, a lot of it is, you know, the, the relationship that we have with the family is, so is very, very important, right? So, a lot of times if it's a student who it's the first time that they've come to the office, or they get involved in something on the bus, we'll always err on the side of reaching out to the parents, even if, even if it's minor, particularly in the beginning. And a lot of what we see is the same students who are the ones that are repeating the same mistakes, right? So as you develop that relationship with the family, you'll, you can kind of have some discretion as to, the same exact thing happened yesterday on the bus, we just talked about it. Yeah, it happened again. Okay, I'm gonna have to let them know it happened again. Versus if they, you know, maybe gotten a little argument in the calf, you know, that's not something that we're gonna report necessarily. If it's not something that is gonna turn into a larger issue, or, you know, if it was with the same student, then we would, you know, get involved immediately. So there is some discretion there that doesn't say, you know, if you do, if you do A, then, you know, this is exactly what's gonna happen. But we will always err on the side of notifying the family.
Yeah. My concern isn't so much outside of the classroom, but in the classroom, when one student is responsible for disrupting the education of all the students, how do you identify and address that?
Yeah. Well, so, we need to hear from the teachers, you know, when it happens. What we always encourage them to do is, is whether it's through our internal tracking of like the minor incident reports, major incident reports, is make sure that you're letting us know every time. And sometimes what happens is that things will go and then eventually, you know, we'll hear about it a couple of months later. And it's, this has been going on forever. I can't deal with it anymore. And that becomes challenging. But when we hear about it constantly, we'll keep working with the student on their behavior, work with the teacher on strategies for managing that student in the classroom. If it's something that's repeated, you get the family involved immediately. And it's always helpful when the teachers reach out and describe it from their perspective, because they saw it. Because when the student goes home, oftentimes it's.
It's a different story.
Sounds a little bit different, right? And then if we're trying to, you know, do it third-hand, it becomes even more challenging. So I will always invite the parent in. Come on in. Let's sit down with the teacher. Let's go through it. Bring the student in. And let's make sure that everyone's dealing with the same exact information. So.
Perfect.
That's how we approach those situations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Going back to one of Sal's questions, you, you mentioned getting more health into the elementary schools. Have, is there any talk of integrating a little bit more with the science? I mean, so, you know, you already have a science curriculum. You have teachers that, teaching it as part of the curriculum. There's a lot of crossover there. Has there been any talk about?
Yeah, certainly, certainly an area to explore. I don't, we have a brand-new science coordinator who's very passionate and very enthusiastic. So.
He's a great person to talk to. That's why.
He would be a great person to talk to. And he's, he's in the same house office as me. So, what kind of neighbors. So, that's a great point, and certainly something to talk about for now. Something to, you know, maybe something, pieces we can get into the curriculum that kind of crossover between health and science.
It was about, I'm gonna say, ten to twelve years ago, that the health education component was, was being taught by the fifth and sixth grade science teachers. So around, again, ten, ten, twelve years ago, then that's when certified health educators were hired for those grade levels. So it did exist before, not necessarily in the younger grade levels, but that's really how it started.
Be a good way to get it into the.
Got into the middle school. That's right.
Yeah, it would be a good way to get pieces in.
It's a great thing to look at, at least to be able to get some of the topics into the classroom.
Yeah. Thank you.
Well, I very much appreciate you coming in tonight. There's obviously a lot of work to be done in this area, and there'll be a lot of focus and continued conversations on it. But very much appreciate you coming forward. As Barbara indicated, you know, we have any information, and it's something that we need to take seriously and consider. And as we're putting programs together, really make sure it's at the forefront of our decision-making. So appreciate you coming in and sharing that tonight with us.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a question. So MCAS release, have you guys had any trouble with Edwin Analytics? Any data problems anyone noticed?
Could you identify yourself, please?
I'm, I work with the Executive Office of Education, but I went to high school here.
Oh, okay.
So I just came to ask.
To enjoy our dialogue?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
There's like a lot of things that you guys, I'm Ravi.
Hi, Ravi. What's your last name?
Yalman Chili. I graduated, like, I graduated college just this summer. So it's been like four years since I graduated CHS.
Oh, great.
Eight years.
So I'm sorry, could you go off of what you were asking about?
Yeah. So with MCAS, have you guys had any trouble with the October release?
No.
No problem?
No problems.
Other problems in the reports?
Nope.
Okay. Is there anything that you would like to see implemented in Edwin with regards to the reports in the future?
Does it, can we talk about SATs or ACTs? Is that something we can voice our opinion on?
SATs and ACTs aren't.
Part of the Edwin Analytics.
No, they're third-party. But is, do you have any influence on, on, I mean, I'll tell you why. Because not this, not this month, the prior month. What date was it? What was the last time prior to?
September.
September. So I think what the problem is, I have students that I deal with on a daily basis. They took their testing in September, and we're in the middle of October, and they still don't have the results back from their September. And they're right around the corner for applying for schools and things like that. So they're not, they don't wanna take the test again if they did well. If they did poorly, they have to take it again. So they've already missed Octobers. You follow me, Rav?
So, Sal, just, I, I don't think he's gonna be able to help you, because this is the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. SATs is the College Board. So they're two completely different entities.
They don't talk to each other?
No, no. They do, they do in a sense, they do in a sense that you can get all of your, your district reporting on one page, but they are completely two different entities. So he's not gonna be able to help you with that. That is a College Board issue, and that's, this, he's not the right venue to be taking that.
That's a private company that administers the tests.
Correct. Same with the ACTs.
So if somebody wants to complain about it, who do they complain to?
College Board.
Your best, I would be to go to the College Board. But what I would recommend is just have the students take the tests again in October anyways. And from what I remember about college apps, when you apply, they take the best of your scores. So if they take it again, it won't really hurt them.
I know, but.
But, I mean, that's probably.
Very stressful.
Yeah, let me, let me just finish up. So, no, there's nothing necessarily that we need within the reporting. The reporting is pretty, you know, comprehensive. And Desi has put together their radar report, which really helps us combine some of those documents, some of those different reports together. So I don't think we're in a situation where we're looking for anything different than what we currently have. We just need to digest what the new, the new ratings are, and also what the new parameters are for students in terms of their reporting.
Yeah. Honestly, with Next Gen, when, a lot of the issues that we've been getting is, there's no documentation available for what the parameters are. Like, you have, we have like a lot of like Next Gen data coming out in like the three through eight grades, but none of the documentation is available to the public.
It isn't, because they're embargoed. So the test scores will be coming out. And you, you work for Desi? I'm sorry, who do you work for?
I work for Edwin Analytics.
Okay.
So we work with Desi.
The, right now, the scores are embargoed. They just came out on Monday. We just are going through our webinars right now. And they become public on tomorrow, which is the eighteen, which is the eighteenth. So that's why no one can get access to them.
Well, what I meant was that a lot of the principals, and I think district admins, have gotten access to them, right?
Correct. That's the only people that should have access to them.
Correct, yeah. But they, we've been getting requests from them about what the new achievement levels are. Because the old, MCAS legacy is within the two-hundred to two-eighty range, but then Next Gen is in the five, like four-hundred to six.
That was in the webinars. So they had to sit through the webinars in order to obtain that information, or they receive that information from somebody like me, who would then present it to the, the district admin if they're not on Edwin.
Okay. So you guys do have access to?
We most certainly do have access to it.
Is there anything else that we could help you with? Because we, we need to complete our agenda at some point.
That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. No, that's okay.
Moving along. Yeah. Third report of the, the evening for you is a, just a quick personnel report for the month of September. Again, this is a report that you receive monthly from the Personnel Office, and it just details the new hires, resignations that were received, and then some retirements and assignment changes within the department. No action required on your part. Again, just a listing and a detail of the different personnel actions that occurred over the month of September.
On a personal note, we, we voted on the situation with Cindy Sandholm. Her dad just passed away. In fact, I think the wake and funerals today couldn't go because of that thing at the high school. So.
I'm sorry.
It's funny how, strange how things work out sometimes.
Fourth item on the agenda this evening is the fiscal two thousand and eight budget report. This is the first quarter financials. So we typically provide, I upload on a monthly basis with Joanna copies of the year-to-date budget reports in the Dropbox. But each quarter, we actually provide a detailed financial report. So this is the first of the fiscal year. And if you don't mind, I would just ask Joanna to, to cover a couple of highlights with you. And, yeah, we'll answer any questions that you, you may have.
In your packet is my memo outlining some of the variances due to the first quarter. And the largest variance is due to how we budget for the labor in fiscal year eighteen. And on the first page of my memo, kind of talks about three areas. The two percent cost of living increase, the retro payment for last year's teacher's contract, and the salary reserved for lane changes for teachers who have achieved a higher degree this fiscal year. So on page five of the detail report, you can see the seven hundred and thirty-five thousand budgeted for the cost of living increases, the one forty-six, eight ninety for the lane changes. And then we'll talk about the retro. And when you look throughout all the pages of the report, you'll see the labor accounts are over budget. And the primary reason is because the budgeted amounts are in the COLA account, the lane change account. And then I wanna talk about the, what we did last year with the special ed tuitions account, and, and what we're proposing for this year. So I'd like to come to the next school committee meeting with a request for a budget transfer to sprinkle the seven hundred and thirty-five thousand for the two percent cost of living increases down to all the labor accounts for the, for the people in the teacher's contract. I don't have the exact number of the seven thirty-five, but it'll, it'll be pretty close to that. I'd also like to come to the next meeting with the budget transfers for the lane change account. It'll again be close to the one forty-six, because many of the teachers achieved a higher degree. But some of those didn't quite make it. So there'll be some monies left over there. Now, the retro is a little more involved, and I'll bring, bring that forward, too. So if you remember last year when we budgeted for the teacher increase, it didn't happen in fiscal seventeen, but it did happen in fiscal eighteen. So we paid that retro out September first, about six hundred thousand. So last year, we took those funds, and we presented this at the June and July meetings, and we took that excess fund and paid special ed tuitions. So we will propose for this year to do a budget transfer out of the special ed tuitions account, and then sprinkle that to the different labor accounts to cover the six hundred and four thousand for the retro pay. So those are the three areas that, once that's all put to all the labor accounts, most of these variances will go away. The only variances we should see would be, for example, if we had a vacancy and we budgeted at Masters, step three, and we hired someone at Masters, step six, I should be a little over. Or vice versa. Maybe if we hired him at Bachelor, step one, then we'd be favorable. And then these reports will be a much better tool to guide us through the rest of the year with where our labor really stands. So does that make sense on labor? Okay. The second part of my memo is just about special ed tuitions, and that's on the last page of the report, page nineteen, since it's such a significant piece of our budget. And this is just a refresher of what we already laid out in the fiscal eighteen budget book, of how we budget for special ed tuitions. Overall, we're expecting seven dot four million for out-of-district tuitions, and we're gonna fund it through different sources. The local budget, the circuit breaker account, school choice, and the, we're expecting a credit or refund from Valley Collaborative, and taking a portion of that refund and putting it towards special ed tuitions. When you look at all of that, that's about eight point two million of funding available. And if we come in at the seven dot four million, we'll still have eight hundred and forty-one thousand available as reserve for tuitions for future years. And then the last piece is school choice, another reserve fund. We have nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand now. About thirty thousand a month is coming in from school choice. That number will change once the October data gets loaded up with DESE, and then also when they look at our special ed component of school choice. So we're conservatively estimating two hundred and fifty thousand of school choice for this year. When we offset special ed tuitions, we should really not have any more unforeseen costs, and we should keep that reserve of nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand in school choice. So those are the big components of the first quarter budget. The second component of the handout is the grant and revolving fund summaries. You're familiar with that layout. And not too, too much activity through the summer for the revolving funds and the grants. So if you have any questions on that, I'm happy to answer.
I think you'll, no, Joanna, thank you very much. I think when you see the transfers come before you in November, and we actually do make those transfers, that is gonna settle up the salary accounts. So then when we actually do the second quarter financial report in December, we'll get a much better indication of where we're going for the year. Again, no concerns on salary or non-salary accounts. And again, at the second quarter is when we typically do a full projection for the year to show, you know, how we're anticipating finishing out. But all in all, I have no concerns with the personnel and non-personnel accounts at this point. And like I said, as Joanna indicated, we'll be bringing those transfers to you at the, the next meeting. And all of your grant revolving funds are in good shape as well.
Now, on the grant, the E-rate, is that what was approved last night? Right now it's empty. Approved at the town meeting last night, the transfer?
Yeah, correct. So that, that number didn't come in yet.
Right.
So that'll come in, and so that'll appear on that line.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's no action before you this evening. It's just a report. So the last agenda item I had this evening is approval of field trip requests. And there were two this evening. One I previously emailed the school committee about. This was the Chelmsford High School cross-country team had been invited to the Manhattan Invitational Race. And this came in and crossed paths between our last meeting. So I did authorize them to go on that trip, even though it was last weekend, October thirteenth and fourteenth. So technically, it's just a vote to have kind of prior approval, prior authorization on that trip. And a second trip that doesn't happen until the spring, the McCarthy Middle School, eighth-grade world history classes are looking to go to New York City, May thirty-first and June first. So I recommend retroactively approving the first trip, and then the second trip for McCarthy.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve in retroactive the Manhattan Invitational Bronx, New York. Bronx-New York trip. And I also make a recommendation that we approve the eighth-grade world history trip.
I second the motions for each.
Any questions or concerns? I think, who have a mail runner, Zach, somebody came in fourth, which is, that's a huge
That's huge.
Huge meet, so it's pretty good. Other kids did well, too, but that was particularly
That's huge.
Yeah. And you never, nobody ever falls, unfortunately.
No, well, the track people do.
Yeah. Okay. If there's no discussion, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous for?
Thank you. That's all I had this evening.
Are there any liaison reports, or any other comments that people wanna share?
I went to South Row PTO. They're a very ambitious and excited bunch, and very well-attended meetings. I'm actually very surprised. And I also went to McCarthy PTO, and again, they have a very solid PTO. So, it was nice to hear all their updates.
I think Paco was tonight, but he couldn't go because of this. So, I don't think I commented on the alumni fundraiser on Sunday. It was a great day, and I think the event has tremendous potential for the future. And, you know, the alumni also have picked up some more scholarships. It's amazing.
Wow.
And they've gotten some big additions to previous, there were a couple of scholarships, the Hoy, I think that's the family name, but anyway, there are a couple of, the base amount's huge. They're donating like $60,000 in whack in some cases. So, people, you know, it's great what happens. We don't often hear about the work goes behind it. So, a lot of people have been very supportive of the scholarship groups, both of them, as far as that goes. And they just met also, both the town of Chelmsford and the alumni met with a senior class, I think, within the last week or so, so that they are aware of the scholarships are available. And you wouldn't believe, the scholarship applications have been down.
Really?
Yes. With all the monies, you know, it's a bit
The fact that they're available to alumni who are, you know
Yeah. The alumni part, well, the alumni part, the graduate ones, we've been doing greater amount of work with them.
Yeah.
Because it's appropriate for the organization. So, those are, have become more and more competitive. But the general population of some of the other one has been down. And I don't know if it's just because of the time of the year or what, but that's why they're spending time to make sure that people are aware of all the different kinds, because they're all different. You know, the alumni is tied to a lot of organizations, you know, teams and organizations and those kinds of things, and Chelmsford's based on need. So, there's help there, but people need to apply.
Are you allowed to apply for as many as you want? Like
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. If they fit the categories.
They actually encourage you to.
Some people, unfortunately, because I'm on the committee, some people apply even if they're not qualified, which makes it challenging.
Never hurts to apply.
Yeah.
But you have to, some have to, you have to be pursuing a degree in education, or a degree, you know.
But there's so many of them.
Yeah.
And I would imagine that
Well, the other thing that happens, there are several based on overcoming adversity essays. So, but they'll submit one essay for all of the four or five that are based on a tragedy and overcoming adversity.
There's only so many words you can use.
Yeah, I know. So, the process is interesting, but there's a lot out there, and people are working hard, so hopefully people take advantage of those things.
Can I just point out one thing quickly? Just a reminder that October's a funny month. We have five Tuesdays in October. So, we're actually going a number of weeks before we meet again. And then we moved the first meeting in November to the second week. So, we're actually off until the second week in November, which is November 14th. That'll be our next regular school committee meeting. We do not
Policy tomorrow?
Yeah, tomorrow night, Policy Subcommittee.
Six o'clock tomorrow is policy. And then actually, the Council of Schools has their first meeting tomorrow night at seven
Yeah.
At McCarthy. But we're here six o'clock for policy. But the next regular school committee meeting is not until November 14th. So, we have almost a month.
You want me to cover it?
No, no, I'll go. If you wanna come, that means.
I'll try.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded and all in favor, aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.